Not nobody.
All right, folks, we will call this meeting of June 2nd, Richland City Council to order. If you would all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Laid.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. The clerk will now call the roll.
Councilmember Abram, here.
Councilmember Grimmer, here.
Councilmember Heim, here.
Councilmember Luke, here.
Councilmember North, here.
Councilmember Purcell, here.
Councilmember Webb, here.
Councilmember Giddon, here.
All right, we have seven of eight council members here to present tonight. Councilmember Purcell had informed me earlier this afternoon that he was unable to make it due to a business committee. We are down to item four, the agenda approval. Motion made seconded for approval of tonight's agenda. Further comments, questions, additions, subtractions? Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that motion carries. We are down to public comments. We do have a card in this evening from Judy Meyer from our Historical Commission. Judy, come forth, please.
Hello, I'm Judy Meyer, on the Historical Commission, and I'm here to represent Mayor Briggs for hosting a wonderful event show yesterday in honor of our visitor's hand of Mr. Brower from Hunter Electric Engineering in Bridgeton. And Mr. Brower donated a beautiful painting done by Mary Lee paint century. And we are going to probably put it in paint century house. And that only he purchased it, but he had it restored and retrained. And we are so tickled and happy. And we are going to open up paint century house for the first time in a year and a half this Sunday, and I'm very excited about it. And I can tell all of you in the summer, you have been through. But this is our first opening, and we're going to be opening first Sunday of the month every month except for the fourth of July. So we are going to have a few special activities this year because that's our 150th anniversary that is celebrated. So I do have one thing out here about this painting presentation we're going to kick off and read about, and I have to say one of you up on the center. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. And we mentioned also that several of the council members attended, councilmember Grimmer, councilmember Heim, councilmember Luke, and councilmember North. We enjoyed it very much. I thought it was a very nice gesture by Mr. Brower for the donation. Councilmember North.
I'm sorry, Ms. Meyer, what was the time on that on Sunday? Did I miss?
It's from one to four.
One to four. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy. Keep up the good work. Anyone else care to address council tonight? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting and move on to item six, the approval of minutes of the May 19th meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval of the city council meeting minutes of May 19th, 2021. Further comments, questions, additions, subtraction, corrections? Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that motion carries. Appointments and presentations, we have nothing on that tonight. So we will move on down to item eight on permits, waivers, and appeals. First is the sign variance, councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. Move approval for sign variance at the Quality Inn at 12705 St. Charles Rock Road.
Motion made in second to approve a sign variance for Quality Inn at 12705 St. Charles Rock Road, councilmember Luke.
Thank you. I'm in favor of this. Quality Inn is coming in where Super Eight Motel was, so it'll be good to have use of that space again. It's the standard Quality Inn sign.
Very good. I would remind council, we need six votes to approve this. So if the, I don't know, is the African here tonight? Don't see the African, so. Further comments or questions on this sign variance for Quality Inn? Those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Abram, aye.
Councilmember Grimmer, aye.
Councilmember Heim, aye.
Councilmember Luke, aye.
Councilmember North, aye.
Councilmember Webb, aye.
Councilmember Giddon, aye.
Yep, got it, seven votes, and it is approved. We are down to item B, solar panel variance, councilmember Zimmer.
Yes, I moved that the council affirm public works denial of application number 21-0136 submitted by Engineer Solutions for the Nelson Residence at 3107 Smiley Road.
Motion made in second for council to deny the sign, the solar panel variance for 3107 Smiley Road, councilmember Abram.
Yes, I agree with Mr. Zimmer. I'm in favor of denying this. We have an ordinance against it, and neither to be put on front of the house, which is our ordinance, because they're not happening. So I just can't see us passing that. People across the street have looked at it. So I'm in favor of turning this down.
Further comments or questions, councilmember Grimmer.
I too would support the denial of the solar panels and their present innovation of the way that they are now. They, I believe their installation considerably negatively affects surrounding property values. And so I think it's the way our ordinances were crafted, allowing them only on the rear-facing side, I think that's sound judgment, and I'm going to stand by that.
Very good. Councilmember Zimmer?
Yeah, and I'll just back up what they thought I said.
Yeah.
So yes, I'm against it. Being upfront, I think it distracts from the character of the neighborhood. I believe it's size impact they can have on, but not the product. So that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? So just to repeat once again, if you vote in the affirmative, you are voting for denial of the variance. We all understand? Very good. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Grimmer, aye.
Councilmember Heim, aye.
Councilmember Luke, aye.
Councilmember North, aye. Councilmember Webb, aye. Councilmember Zimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Abram?
Aye.
By your vote of six to one, you have denied the solar panel variance for 3107 Smiley Road. Moving on to emergency legislation, contracts, and bids for bid approval, field conditioner, councilmember North.
Thank you. Moved that the city approved the bid submitted by MTI Distributing in the amount of $22,686.07 for the field conditioner groomer for BMAT, second.
Motion made in second to approve the bid for the field conditioner for the Bridgeton Municipal Athletic Complex. Further comments or questions?
Yes, sir. This was in the 2020 budget, but since the pandemic, it was diverted. And so this isn't our capital improvement fund. The budget was for $23,000, so it came under bid. So I am supporting this. Thank you.
Very good. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved, approved, or excuse me. Hearing none, the bid is approved for the field conditioner. Next item is also councilmember North on an out front mower.
Yes, sir. Moved that the city approved the bid submitted by Arch Juan Mower in the amount of $44,620. This is for two out front mowers.
Need a second.
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 Yes.
Motion made in second to approve the bid for two out front mowers for the city Parks and Recreation Department. Further comments or questions, councilmember North?
Yes, sir. This also was diverted from the 2020. It is in our capital improvement fund. This will be one for BMAT, one for park operations. It also came under bid, 22,500 was each bid, it came under 45, and so the bid was for $44,620. So it came under bid, and that was great. So I am approving that. Thank you for voting for it.
Any further comments or questions? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries, the out front mower purchases are approved. Perfection of bills, item 10, bill 6278.
My license.
That's two liquor licenses. Sorry about that, I've got an older agenda, I didn't print up the right one. We have a full liquor license for Olive Garden, councilmember Abram.
Yes, move the first consideration of a full liquor license with Sunday sales for GMRI doing business at the Olive Garden Restaurant, number 10038, 3552 Penridge Drive, Bridgeton, Missouri, 63044. This is a change in managing officer.
Second.
Motion made in second for a full liquor license with Sunday sales for the Olive Garden at 3552 Penridge Drive due to the change in management. Councilmember Abram, anything else?
No.
Okay, those in favor signify, what's the first consideration? Excuse me. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Councilmember Abram, the next one, a liquor license for Shea Louise Bar and Grill.
Move the first consideration of a full liquor license with Sunday sales for Shea's Louise Bar and Grill, 12344 Nester Bridge Road, Bridgeton, Missouri, 63044. This is a new business.
Second.
Motion made in second for, I, councilmember North, for a new liquor license, full liquor license with Sunday sales for Shea Louise Bar, 12344 Nester Bridge Road. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Move to table, second.
Motion made in second, table, councilmember Heim, so I can't take discussion.
Oh, sorry.
Right, point of, or point of.
Clarification.
Clarification on the one before, did we make a motion to table on that?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Fine, thank you, Graff. Uh, motion made in second, table, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries, the item table. We are now down to perfection of bills, item 10A, bill 6278, councilmember North.
Move for second reading of bill number 6278, second.
Motion made seconded for second reading of bill 6278, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries, councilmember North.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri repealing ordinance number 2023 and adopting a new ordinance, 15 the salaries and other compensation of the classified employees of the city as provided for in section 8.04 of the Charter in section 115 of the Code of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri for the fiscal year 2021. Move that bill number 6278 become ordinance number.
21-19, second.
Motion made in second for bill 6278 to become ordinance 21-19. Further comments or questions, councilmember North?
Yes, sir, this was discussed at the park board, they approved it to be more competitive in our salary base, so I will be supporting this.
Very good. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Heim, aye. Councilmember Luke, aye. Councilmember North, aye. Councilmember Webb, aye. Councilmember Zimmer, aye. Councilmember Abram, aye. Councilmember Grimmer, aye.
By your vote of seven to zero, you have approved bill 6278 to become ordinance 21-19. Onto the next item, B, 10B, bill 6279, councilmember North.
Thank you. I could have just ran this meeting there.
Some people think you do.
Sorry, sorry. Move for second reading of bill number 6279, second.
Motion made in second for second reading of bill 6279, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries, let me finish out.
I'm sorry.
You're trying, you're trying to run his beat, don't you? Councilmember North?
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an agreement substantially and reform past year two with Byrne and Jones for the Matthews Park Improvement Project Phase One, in the amount of $415,513.00. Move that bill number 6279 become ordinance number 21. I'm sorry, 20, 20. Thank you, second.
Motion made in second for bill 6279 to become ordinance 21-20, and I think it is You forgot the 60 cents. You said zero.
I said zero.
Oh, change, again, I've got the other agenda, sorry about that. You all right, cool?
Everyone's fine. Thank you. I just want to make a comment. Matthews Park Ranch is a great opportunity for the city of Bridgeton. This park will be updated, the bathroom facilities will be the number one, going from sewer hookup, office attic, there'll be more area parking to provide better areas to ball field, improve the sidewalks, we will have walking trails with solar lighting, which will give residents a safer exercise area. So I will be supporting that. Thank you.
Very good. Further comments or questions, councilmember Zimmer?
Just a question I asked earlier, I didn't think I got the answer completely. What percentage are we paying out of this grant?
Mr. Heim, can you answer that?
Five percent, okay, that's much lower than what I heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grimmer?
I think it'll just be, just a comment, a great amenity to our two new subdivisions of PP. The one, of course, is the, what is it, Port McKay or McKay Vista, now it's called. They actually have a part of the development, it's a walkway directly crossing the creek into that park, so this is working out very nicely for the city, I think. We're fortunate to get the grant and so forth.
Very nice. Councilmember Zimmer?
Yeah, I just wanted to restate that it looks great. As you go into the subdivision and look down there, it's all open, and there's, you know, it's just, I think it's going to be great for the park to have these other amenities. It's a, it's a, it's a nice park, and it is warm, so we're proud of having it in there. I'm wondering, we had, no, that's, that's good, I'll ask it at a different time. Thank you, that's all I have.
Very good. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luke, aye. Councilmember North, aye. Councilmember Webb, aye. Councilmember Zimmer, aye. Councilmember Abram, aye. Councilmember Grimmer, aye. Councilmember Heim, aye.
By your vote of seven to nothing, you have approved bill 6279 to become ordinance 21-20. We are down to item 11, consideration of new bills, bill 6280, councilmember Grimmer.
Move for first reading of bill number 6280.
Second.
Motion made in second for first reading of bill 6280, councilmember Grimmer.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number 21-PZ-04, granting a minor commercial subdivision known as Bonville Subdivision to subdivide approximately 4.24 acres into three lot zones, B2 Community Business District located at Party 200, Bonville Drive. A final class, move to table, bill number 6280.
Second.
Motion made in second to table, bill 6280. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries, bill 6280 is table. Discussion items, we don't have any of those tonight. We have the report of the city attorney.
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Very good. We will go to council communication. Councilmember North will start with you, since you're running me.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment, I was sorry for the resident in our subdivision in Ridgeway who had a very scary night with her car in her living room. There was a surprise. I just speak with the resident on Sunday after church, and they were just very thankful that no one was hurt. I am a member of, and bar, a member of the Aquanet Club, and I am promoting our golf tournament, which is Friday, July the 16th, 2021. I have applications, would love if you could get a team. And I do appreciate all the support of our parks division. I also attended the presentation of the painting with Mary Lee from the Hunter Engineering. I'm very happy that they were, they were able to bring it back home, so that was, it was great. Sorry. I'm on page. Mayor, this is for you. Congratulations to the mayor attending his installation at Maryland Heights Centene Ice Center. That is something you need to see, it is a great venue for, for the ice haters and for the, we were in the barn, they called it. So I do congratulate you on being president of the municipal league. Good luck and best wishes. And you know what, I'm done. Thank you.
Oh, no.
Thank you, councilmember North. Councilmember Abram?
Yes, I also want to congratulate the mayor on becoming president of the municipal league, and I hope everyone had a nice holiday. And that's all I got to say. I think she says all fun.
Usually does.
Yeah.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you. Ditto, congratulations, it was nice to attend the event, receiving four and in. The social media policy just wrapped up tonight, so hopefully at the next council meeting we will have that for all of you to quickly approve. And then finally, the last time I'll be able to say this this year, the parade entries are due by the 15th of this month, so remind you again, as you go out and visit the businesses, we want to honor them, so please invite them to join the parade this year. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Heim?
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations also, being installed as president of the Insta League of Metro St. Charles. I hope to attend a lot of the meetings while you're there, as you try to attend a lot of years. Also, thanks for allowing me to be part of the presentation back to the Historical Commission that Mr. Brower donated the painting. I don't know if there's any of these additional ones left, if anybody needs any. Judy would have some for you, that's a pretty interesting green. And I'm glad to see that the ice shore on Hope St. Charles Road, the house number three is finally demolished, and hopefully something new is going to be built there. My question about the liquor license, Shea Louise, is that going to occupy the space for the soap box? Is that right?
Right.
And I've been getting a lot of calls for Fourth of July parking business.
We will go over that in a second.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thanks, audience, for being here, and people tuning in. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Grimmer?
Okay, well, thank you. Again, ditto on the congratulations on your ascension to president of the Metro League here. And at the past planning and zoning meeting, after the regular meeting, I, some of the members of the planning and zoning committee expressed their concern of the appearance of Lindbergh Boulevard, our section of Lindbergh Boulevard through the Bridgeton section, I guess, there. It is, I kind of concur, it's pretty tough. I know we had an issue with the Value City not being converted into an adult daycare center and so forth, maybe they'll clean that up a little bit, the parking lot and so forth, but, and I know that my council, co-councils in Ward One have all brought the men, big and tall men, that shopping center up many times. I know as a city, we're limited, we just can't go in there and do what we'd like to do because it is private property, but they point out how nice if you go north to Mahesa Wood, or go south in the Free Cor and Olivest and so forth, how nice Lindbergh looks there compared to what it looks like going through Bridgeton, so just something to consider. I did tell them I would pass it on, and I do concur, and I hope that there is something we can do later on as our economic condition improves to maybe give some incentive to clean that area up and make it look a little nicer. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. The Big and Tall Man store next to Steak and Shake, I wanted to ask about that. I guess the last I heard, we were revising some ordinances to sink our key bin a little deeper, and I'd like to know if you can ask the proper people to talk about that, Chairman there in turn. Next thing, just a friendly item, the agenda changes, is there any way we can, like, if you'd make a change on the agenda, like, put a little R1, 2, 3 on there, and right behind the date, and that will let us know that, you know, which is which without doing much research?
Obviously, I could have used that tonight.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm, I'm not official on the Historical Society now, which I think is going to be quite a bit of fun, but I guess the maintenance of the Gentry House is really looking sad, and I'm wondering at budget time, maybe we can look at doing something, like, there's, definitely needs paint, there's wood that needs to be replaced, and there's, you know, porches falling down a little bit, so I'm wondering if we could work on, you know, we could get some help on, from other council people, or maybe looking at a little additional budget money for that. I know in the past, it's like, you know, sort of out of sight, out of mind on the Historical Committee, because I've never been on it, now that I'm on it, I see, you know, they need, you know, they could use some extra help on pushing it up, maybe get some things fixed up there. Next thing, a few more. The please wear mask signs on the doors, somebody asked me about those coming in, whether they needed masks, I was wondering if we could take those down, or if we need to keep them up.
We do need to keep a few of them up, just to remind people that if you haven't been vaccinated, you do have to wear the mask.
Yeah, but it says, please wear your mask.
Yeah, we may maybe adjust the signs a little bit and just say, you know, if you haven't been vaccinated yet, wear the mask, otherwise you're free to come and go.
Yeah, please, that may make it easier. Stay in walking in the stores, you're wondering, then you see the people serving you, or, you know, like, behind the counter, they don't have theirs on, it's like, oh, okay, take mine off. Okay, just real quick, midterm budget review, somebody asked me to ask about that, and I'm curious too, what date we're going to have that on.
I'm going to bring that up tonight.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Webb? Thank you. We will go on, Mr. Gunn, we will talk a little bit, if you would please, about the concerns raised by councilmember Zimmer, as well as other council members here on the South Lindbergh, I call it South Lindbergh, I think they officially call it North Lindbergh here, but those properties in question.
Sure. The team are making questions. Currently, they are, so we're changing with property maintenance ordinances, that's going to help us looking at different structures. This structure does all 50 different existing codes, so we have them summoned under the International Property Maintenance Code for several issues. So once we do that, that's across here, and of course, we can take care of it up and forward. So change the rating now of looking at adding all the structures in Bridgeton to all, so that's what we're looking at right now.
And how many ti, I'm sorry, how many times has it been cited? And when did it start?
It started, today, looking at the previous history, back in 2017, it was the first start popping up on our radar screen. He had two violations in 2017, two, or two, three, in 2018, that were noted violations. And then going back, in that same year, for tall grass, he was citing three counts, and we cut it off. So jumping a year forward, in 2019, he had three letters of unnoticed violation in the building, and then five violation letters for tall grass, and you know it was. And in 2020, he had four letters of unnoticed violation, and then for tall grass, he was citing three counts, we now cut these of that year. And then this year, he has one notice violation, and we cut the grass one time right now.
Okay, I think councilmember Zimmer had a follow-up for you.
Well, I was going to ask the same question you did, but after hearing this, this isn't acceptable, I mean, this is totally unacceptable, you wouldn't find this in Free Cor or any of the other Johnny cities. Anyway, that's, that's what I'd like.
I would say, though, that you have to give, every property owner has a due process that they have to go through. That's the problem. And as much as we may not like it, we have to follow. And as much as we may not like it, we have to follow the process through municipal court. If we go out and the process is not followed, we'd be in court again because the property owner would sue the city. And thus, we would lose probably without question unless the city attorney wants to come in on it.
Yeah, well, right. I mean, you know, the one thing I guess that came up today in the, in the materials that you sent on, which is new information to me at least, is this notion that there may be open, uh, areas and homeless people may be in there. I mean, that's, you know, to the extent it's open, um, you know, now you cross over into nuisance, uh, category. And we talked about before how the threshold for declaring a nuisance and abating a nuisance and then, uh, placing a lien on the property to, to, to secure the city's costs in, in addressing that generally deals with, it, it, it can't be aesthetic issued, it can't simply be code violation, but it has to be a danger to public. So is it about to fall over? Are there structural problems? One of the bases on which, you know, you can find a nuisance, go through that process, is if it's open. Um, now that doesn't mean you can tear it down. You have to do what you need, you know, the sort of least invasive thing to, to abate the nuisance, board it up, whatever. Um, so that is something that if in fact it is open and, and, you know, certainly if there are people, uh, occupying it, then, you know, we can, you know, if, if the city chooses to do so, we can pursue that from a nuisance standpoint. Doesn't fix all the problems in terms of the aesthetics, the lines that are ripped, that sort of thing, but it's, it's something. But we have to be able to prove that it's, it's, it's open and, and, you know, that, uh, it would be helpful from a nuisance standpoint if we can prove that people are accessing it. So, you know, that's, that's a new possibility, I guess.
And I guess along that line, Chief, have you had complaints that we investigated people living in there that?
In, uh, twenty eighteen, from ten twenty-three to twenty eighteen to today, we, uh, responded up there for all calls served. It has ranged from visitors to suspicious persons hanging around. We had found a couple of open doors. Now, I talked with Mr. Landau and he is going to call tomorrow if he can get out here. And we are actually, he's gonna unlock the building and we're gonna go in to the thirty-five thirty-five and make sure, we can verify if there is or is not some folks having access to that building. Now, we checked it today. There was a small wooden wheel on the northwest corner of the building, but it's covered by bushes again. It does not appear a hole so strong that anyone can access to the inside. But he is going to come out now. He has been suffering personal health issues. So he is going to call when he gets in the area and we're gonna meet him up there.
That'd be fine, and I can realize the health issue, but this has been going on now for five years.
No, I can't.
And to, to the point that it's not tolerable anymore with him. So if you would let me know if you're gonna meet him, perhaps I can schedule D two up there with him as well.
That would be, yeah, I'll be glad to do that.
Okay. Let me know.
I, I gave him, you know, told him he needed to get up there.
Yes.
And, uh, he, he said he was trying to get out tomorrow.
Well, the big thing with him as well is he needs to understand that every time Mr. Gunn has the grass cut, that's a fairly expensive bill for people that don't cut the grass here. When we have to do it, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Gunn, is it still three hundred or is it higher on commercial?
It depends on how, how long it takes the most. You know, it's cap on, or cap fee, sometimes we hope he can help us with that.
But it's the minimum though that's usually required.
I see the vote from the work from hundred twenty-five up to a hundred and a hundred pardons. It is pretty varied, but it'd be commercial, it's probably about three hundred dollars a pop.
Roughly about three hundred dollars. Most people would say, I don't know that I want to spend that kind of money to cut the grass all the time. Councilmember Hine?
Uh, yes, regarding the access, uh, to the building, uh, by, uh, vagrants or homeless people, would it be prudent to check at night, uh, when it would seem like they'd be in there sleeping, um, as opposed to during the day, are, are both checked day and night?
Well, we've seen, but we have been up there, we have not found any vagrants in the building. And Mr. Landau, if anyone could identify them. Our goal is to make sure that the doors, that doors are secure from the inside. The door in question has no handle on the outside, so it has to be opened from the inside. And when we checked both doors today, thirty-five, 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 thirty-one, those doors are super secure. So if somebody's living and hitting into that door, not through the ground area, we're gonna have to find out if and how they're getting into the building. So that's gonna be our goal as well, is make sure that we do not have that issue with the people we're expecting. And if we do have an issue, make it an arrest and take it in the prison, actually, you know, and get Mr. Landau on page with what city needs to rectify decision.
Very good. Further comments? Mr. Gunn? Anything else in your report?
Uh, we're gonna take that for time, I didn't know if it was reprinted and put up tomorrow. As far as the park, we've got, I just did some more pictures today, we had some good news. Amity Week has, um, changed out our hole in the year, so we do have hollow hours in, have a new bathroom facility, um, between the park's apartment and the works. We have been placing some additional pipe around, new older walls and new sidewalks. So there we go. Drive coming very well, fellas, that was placed in last week. New older wall on the end, of course. So there hasn't been a power outage, it has water, so it's ready to go. And next week, we'll be starting the final part of the heat of the road, only a couple of new parking lines. And that should take about two to three weeks later.
Very good. Further comments? All right, Mr. Kane? Parks?
We, uh, are definitely operational, uh, due to foundation of, um, current weather and the chemical problems we've been working through. Um, if we're running correctly, it's three o'clock today and our plan is open tomorrow, so I'll give you an idea this evening, um, our athletic supervisor, without checks, uh, to see if the motor's been running without checking. Um, so we're all even, left work out there tomorrow morning, um, hopefully in the budget, uh, made this evening, uh, another issue, so, uh, hopefully we're all comfortable. Um, we have hired Evan Stone to replace Chris Shally at the athletic supervisor at P Mac. He starts on Monday. He ran the league for the Bayville Down for a couple of years and then, uh, we're going to do a full, uh, you ran the league down there, so be happy to have that start on Monday. We have a couple of special events coming up. We have the summer kickoff event is Sunday, June thirteenth, and that's the shop we brought the vendor pair, well, the first summer counter. Uh, vendor pairs five, eight, two counters, fifty-eight, and Arden Allen Company, uh, will have, uh, twenty members of food, some of whom, uh, will be in the out, anybody's, uh, wanting to nice it out. And finally, the addition derby, introduction with the club, club, Saturday, uh, kind of rule of the year. They open up, uh, uh, the top, it was very, um, uh, top secret, I guess, they were shot at. No fishing, uh, as well, so we can probably have a better.
Very good. Comments, questions? Moving on, Chief?
I promised to stay away from the laser picture, couldn't I?
Put that boat in there.
We, uh, we're gonna have the appreciation day on Sixth Hall, um, eleven, the one here at City Hall. And we're gonna be passing out hot dogs, we have, you know, a lot of sign reminding the appreciation day spirit station. And, um, we hope this is going to be as well as tennis as it was last year. We're gonna be assessing the hall and the single serve food angles to a school on June seventeenth on the fourth and hundredth Hall Hospital, which is on East Side of this complex. And there's a live tour event, which is not openly, you know, public, it is biometric only, and they're giving out two hundred vouchers to each person. So we'll be assessing it. And on five twenty, uh, officers recovered an entire pallet of animal packages that was offloaded off of one of the trucks, our fifth, eighth, and ninth, and it was discovered by a animal control. And he was back there on patrol and discovered a sound that had a tamper punch, was a brush, and we have no idea the F B N identity of all those packages because they were sealed, wrapped in, uh, closed plastic on that pallet and offloaded. So there's a couple of different agencies were working, but capable of handling, uh, love it, it's a mess up and covered, so that was a very good job by, uh, children. I've got some bad news. All she'll be operating on tomorrow for a back issue, any comment, right now, is in ICU. At Mercy, that is for observation purposes, uh, she's had an E S O and we really don't know anything. And so she was having some testings, so we looked at her, she really lost some courage. And Randy Jones, uh, submitted his third resignation, uh, in the police department and this one's stable, we're doing intent. He has accepted a position of the, uh, place.
Further comments or questions? All right, Mr. Bookout?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay, quickly, because we also need, ought to ask Councilmember Zimmer to go into closed session here tonight if we could. Councilmember Luke was asking about parking passes. The city clerk and I just discussed this this evening. All right, Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Hine, sorry. Uh, we will have parking passes available to council, hopefully before the next meeting. When we do get them, we'll advise council and they can come pick them up and disperse whatever way they, they fit. We will have the same numbers that we've had in the past. This will be our city clerk's first Fourth of July festivities. So bear with us on this one if you will. No, she'll do a fine job. Thank you all for your comments as far as serving the municipality of St. Louis County as the president of the municipal league. With that, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Zimmer?
I'd make a motion for a closed session to discuss matters relating to legal actions, litigation, confidential, or privileged communication with councils pursuant to Section six-ten, uh, RS Missouri, leasing, purchases, sales, real estate by a public governmental body where public knowledge of the transition, transaction might adversely affect legal consideration, uh, pursuant to Section six-ten and hiring and firing, disciplining or promoting information about employees discussed, recorded, uh, pursuant to, uh, Section six-ten, um, or documents related to a negotiated contract. Um, hopefully I, you cut it off, I didn't leave anything out.
Is there a second? Motion made in second to go into closed session. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Norris? Aye. Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Abrams?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Hine?
Aye.